Thank you all for joining us tonight. This, I'm going to make one change. So first of all, I'm going to do introductions and then we're going to change the agenda. We're going to do number three first and then we're going to do the budget second. Well, actually, we're going to first do the Lockridge-Grindall-Nowin presentation and then we're going to do budget discussion. So with that, just for the record, I'm Lisa Whalen. I'm the mayor and next to me are council members Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, and Claudia Lacy. Kathleen Refkin is not able to join us this evening. And then staff members that are present this evening are Director of Public Works Gary Peters. We have Don Motzko, city clerk, Ellie Palfus, our city administrator. Anyway, whatever you are, Ellie. And then also for those of you that don't know Angie Bull. She has worked here at the city for quite some time. She works with Brian, but she is going to step in and help out a little bit in the interim after Don leaves. That's why she's here this evening. Welcome, Angie. And then over here, we have Jasper Krugel, our city administrator, and Brian Grimm, our finance director, and then Chief of Police Paul Falls. So with that, I'm going to get started right away. I'm going to let Jasper do the introductions here.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Whalen, members of council. The first item on the agenda after we flipped it is Representative from Lockridge-Grindall-Nowin. Is that pronounced correctly? Yeah. This kind of came about at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. I was chatting with another city administrator and they were talking about lobbying and success stories with lobbying and some of the bonding bill success stories. And we thought it would be a good idea to try to maybe have that conversation here, bring it in to the Minutrista City Council, see if this group thinks it's a good idea to proceed with something like this. You know, I think there was a big push in the bonding bill side of the state legislature this last year, obviously. There were a lot of people that, you know, got awarded funds and this is kind of a way to help us do that if that's an initiative that city council wants to have me work on. So with that, we have Ann. What is your?
Lynchowski.
Lynchowski.
I read your name and it was no way that I was going to be able to pronounce that one, so.
So she's here to talk with the group, give a little presentation, answer any questions. And essentially, if the group feels like this is an initiative that we would like to go down, we could talk about options. If it's something that we want to look at doing an RFP for and see if there's other groups. I'm not familiar with other groups. Obviously, this is just a referral from a colleague, a contact that we have. So if it's something that we want to proceed with, that'd be a route that we could go. And we can kind of go from there and I'll take direction from council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and council and staff and Minister Krugel. It's really nice to be with you and hopefully we can just have a conversation. I didn't bring a PowerPoint. I suppose I could have done that, but I think it's helpful to talk to you and have you understand a little bit about our firm and what we do with capital and hear about what you're looking at. So just a little background on me, I come from local government, so I really value what you do. I served on a city council in the suburbs of the Twin Cities and then I ran for the legislature. Don't ask me why. Served their nine terms and now I assist local governments at the state capitol. So I've kind of done the full circle of local government work the entire time. So our firm, you know, we're a law firm and we do lobbying too. And our firm is involved in lots of things, but what I work on primarily is local government. So our firm is eight lobbyists. We take a team approach to our clients and we want to make sure that we can talk to every single legislator, both sides of the aisle, the governor, his people, his office, no matter who's in power, which changes constantly. We have to pivot to be able to represent, let's say, Minutrista's needs at the capitol. So you can imagine, just let's go through the last few years. Right now, it's a blue place. The trifecta is in charge. So Senator Morrison, who's your senator, she's in charge. Representative Myers, who's your state rep? He's not. Two years ago, you know, four years ago, the House was Republican. And two years before that, the Senate was Republican as well, working with Governor Walz. So we're always having to think through, you know, what is the best story for you to tell, given who's in charge? And while you're a nonpartisan group of people and, you know, I can really appreciate that and that's where I come from, the legislature is not. I mean, it's just not a nonpartisan place. It's a very partisan place. And it's also not based on merit and it's not very logical. So I think coming from local units of government, people often think you can apply merit and a typical sort of intellectual argument to success. And that's just really not how it works there. So we think we really excel at helping nonpartisans sort of move between levels of government, work in a bicameral with an executive who can veto, you know, political field there. And we try to do it well in all four caucuses. So thinking about talking to the administrator was super helpful. You know, I know your legislators well, work with them on many things. That's our job to know all legislators and contrary to public opinion, they change very regularly. So every two years, we get a lot of new people and right now, we have a lot of new people. And Representative Myers is one of those new legislators. He is really important to you all because he serves on the House Capital Investment Committee. So while he's in the minority, he's a really key player here. So he's an asset for your community because he sits on the committee that will determine what goes into that bonding bill. Senator Morrison, you know, she's been there a little longer. She served in the House and served in the Senate and she's in the majority. So she has a bunch of power there. So we would want to work to tell Minutrista's story. I think, you know, thinking through some things with the administrator, you know, you have some hurdles, for sure. You would need to work on your need, I think would be something to think through. The blue trifecta is how you're a needy community. And I, you know, I think you all understand, you know, how that works. I certainly don't want to get between you and your budget, but I know you're going to set the, or you're going to start looking at your preliminary lobbying and you'll have your final and, you know, those are the things we like to understand, to help position you. And the administrator's done a great job to help me understand, you know, what is your net tax capacity? How, what is your, how much skin in the game do you have before you go ask for the state to give you money or someone else? I think one of the best parts of your story is the 1,900 or 2,100 or whatever amount of people is who need the water treatment facility and that it's not everybody. It's not the, I don't know, 8,500 or 9,000, that you've got a very small group of people. You've got people on wells and then you need this other facility. And trying to think through how we would delineate that. Another hurdle on, you know, and you may pick a different priority because we certainly work with bonding, we work with sales taxes, we're taxing for a financing, we work with policies for various cities, we work to stop bad policies for cities. So we're at every committee. But I think one of the things is it's a big number, but that doesn't match. And I think we want to help you think through how Representative Myers and Senator Morrison would tell that story in private to bonding chairs and to the governor's office. And that's, that's the work we do. We work to help people get tours and we work to help you set a legislative agenda that's attainable within a timeframe that's attainable. Your administrator clearly, you know, has an awareness of how the capitol works. I think a lot of people think they know how it works, but they actually don't. And it isn't, people aren't equal around there. I mean, we could talk to 201 legislators, that would just do you no good because we can talk to people who have the power to do what you want and those are ever-changing people. It's who has the gavel, who has the relationships. The way we work, we work and, you know, we can do it however you'd like, but our team of lobbyists would prefer to work with your administrator. That's typically how we work. We like to have one boss telling us what to do. We generally are on a call with the administrator every two weeks and, you know, working year round to move the ball forward. But, you know, we do occasionally have mayors who want to be the go-to person and we can, we can do whatever you want.
Jasper's fine.
Yeah. You know, if you've never had a lobbyist, I can just tell you, it's, it's one of the toughest decisions a council ever makes. And that is because there is that burden to say, well, why do we need a lobbyist? And that's my job. You know, I'm council member Lacy and that's what I do. I go advocate for our community. But you can't go to the capitol every day and you're not going to be there at 3:00 in the morning when the decisions get made. And that is what we do. So I think we find more things, once they make a decision to hire lobbyists, whether it be us or someone else, they look back and think, how did we ever do this without them? And it's just, it's just a different level of play. It's, it is unfair that cities with lobbyists get more than state capitol. It's just true.
And tell us a little bit about some of your, maybe one or two examples of success stories.
Sure. Just this last session, we received funding for 15 cities probably, maybe 20. One of them got $102 million, just one city. You know, they're big and small. Sometimes it's a huge win to get a million dollars. We passed a number of tax increment finance bills for five cities. I think we passed 10 local option sales taxes. You know, so we're, we're working in all the committees. We did a number of, quite a bit of work in the environment committee. I could, I could actually provide that to you in the last session, but we're, we're big and small. I mean, we're everywhere from Poughkeepsie to Watertown. We're, you know, we work with Woodbury, we work with Rochester. So we don't really care the population of the city. It's more, you know, who do we think we can work with? Who's willing to do the work with their legislators and with us to move the ball? I think one thing we like to do is set expectations that people think, well, we'll just get a lobbyist, then we'll get our stuff immediately. And that's also not how it works. People often will wait till the right time, well, let's do it this year and not this year and let's wait two years. And, you know, what we would say is the longer you take to get involved, you're just, you're just not going to get there. You know, you may be able to get a lobbying group who would come and tell you, you know, hire us and we'll get to your bonding bill next year. I mean, I'm not going to tell you that. There's no guarantees. There may not be a bonding bill next year.
I was just going to ask you, do you know if there's going to be a bonding bill next year?
There's, there's no way to know because in, in Minnesota, it's one of the few super majority requirements. And so the minority has to determine if they would like to put up votes. Even if the majority has come out with a bill that the governor agrees to, if the minority won't put the votes up, it won't pass. So we've seen that the last couple of years. Until last year, we had a really big one.
Do you ever, do you ever work to encourage them to vote for a bonding bill?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, what we're really trying to do, if we were doing water treatment for Minutrista, we'd be trying to get the chairs to put you in the bill. The control of 201 people is sort of a different task and legislators aren't really going to decide and having that on for nine terms, they're really not going to decide. If you're a legislator, let's say in Bloomington, and International Falls comes and tells you this great story about why they need a fire station, I mean, that's just not going to compel you to vote for the bill. I mean, why are you voting for the bill? Because you're getting something. And because you're making a, you know, political trade-off possibly for other bills. And so legislators are looking for their own stuff typically in a bonding bill. But we need to get Senator Pappas, who's the chair of the Senate Capital Investment Committee, and Representative Fu Lee, who's the chair of the House Capital Investment Committee, to care about Minutrista, to hear the story of what the problem is here. And we have insight to how those two would make decisions and the chairs change all the time. They're motivated by different things. These two are very into things like climate change. We'd want to tell the story in that frame as it relates to water, diversity and equity. How, how will this assist the people with the lowest socioeconomic status in your community? You know, what is the burden that the administrator's going to have you guys, you know, where you guys are going to decide to pass? So, you know, there's a story to go, you know, to all of that. We have to have Governor Walz care about Minutrista. You know, and there's, there's no question, people look at, you know, how areas vote too, right? And that's part of the equation and that's why we have to go around that. You know, so like when the Democrats are in charge, you know, Minneapolis has it easier, right? But really red parts of states harder. So that's the kind of stuff we want to work. When the Republicans are in charge, the really blue parts of the state have a tougher time.
Right.
And so that's what we work on.
Should be the other way around. You wanted to get more votes.
Pardon?
Should be the other way around. So in other words, when the Democrats are, they want to make sure that their constituents, whether they voted for them or not, are happy in their, in the red part of the state. See?
Logical of you.
I know. I know.
I mean, I think that, that's the, that's the thing for the capitol and we would actually encourage you, if we worked with you, we would encourage you to look beyond bonding. We, we, we think a full-throated approach at the capitol is to not just trying to get more and more money.
No, there would, there would be other things. I think that if we are hiring somebody to do this, you know, there's some things such as, and you're well aware of the Builders Association trying to impose their control over local zoning, fur zoning and housing. So, you know, that's a huge issue and it's been creeping up and up and up a little bit every year. That is seriously an issue that we really need to be aware of and want to make sure that that doesn't happen.
There's other things too that we can focus on. I've just been talking with our city administrator about a, a street taxing district, for instance. And I know that would have to be through the legislation, legislators. So it might be a statewide thing, I don't know. But anyhow, those are some other issues.
And we encourage pilots. Sometimes it's a better way to get the legislature to do something or sometimes we say, let's do this as a statewide approach. You are members, I'm sure, of the League of Minnesota Cities.
Yes, we are.
And, you know, the League of Minnesota Cities and the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and the metro cities.
And the metro cities.
They all work as associations. There's the Small Cities Association to, to bring those sort of collective voices and we assist them. We can push your individual thing through that someone else can't. So the issue you just raised, Housing First, you know, they're all, Housing First because it sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds good.
But that is a perennial debate about what is your zoning authority? What can local governments do? It stemmed out of the Woodbury versus Harstead case, as I'm sure you all know about that case. And so I think that's probably going to be okay next year, given who's in charge, but it will definitely be back in a couple of years, for sure.
It will be.
When majorities change, you know, PFAS is one that all cities are involved in. Now cannabis is another one. You know, Earn Sick and Safe, Paid Family Leave. I mean, there's just a ton of local government issues at the capitol that we're involved in. Municipal salary cap, which was just lifted, just lots of things that you all are tracking and caring about. But if you need to do something specifically like a tax increment finance district, you know, you want some exemption to the law to help your city, you know, that's where we have to step in unless associations can't do that.
Right.
Because they're, they're working for all 854 cities collectively. But they are the cream of the crop. We, we all work together, really top-notch people. So I don't know if you have any other questions for me or I feel like I've talked too much. Sorry.
No, thank you. I have a question for you. I actually did get a letter about what, you know, why do we need a lobbyist and how do you, how are you going to justify this, I think it was $40,000? And so could you just tell us, is it based on, you think you're going to dedicate this many hours to Minutrista? I mean, how, how do you come up with that number? And, and how do you determine who gets how much time?
Yeah, great question. And, you know, for us, it's really a fairness issue. We have cities that are less than 1,000 people and cities that are over 100,000 people and we charge them the same, 40,000. There are a few legacy cities that are at a lower number from previous commitments. That was before my time. But we just, our commitment is we work every day till the last bell. We don't care if you're big or small. We're trying to get your thing. So we give everybody the equal push and we personally are salaried employees. We're not commission-based, so, you know, what you pay doesn't have any impact on me at all. But, you know, that's, we feel like that that's been fair some years. There's no question, some cities have put us through the paces and have gotten, you know, like incredible amounts of value for that. Other cities, you know, have not because they haven't really asked for much. But that's really up to the city councils and the mayors to decide. Most people work on a legislative agenda internally that you all vote on and then you direct the administrator and then he tells me what to do. So let's say there's 10 things you're working on. He's going to tell me, this is one, go get that. You know, this is two. We also caution your constituents who will, people often say things like, and having been on the council, you know, well, if we pay you this, what's our guarantee? There is no guarantee.
Right.
We've had so many provisions put in tax bills that got vetoed. We've had so many provisions put in bonding bills that didn't pass. You know, so like there, there is no guarantee. It is, it is not, it is, you know, it's just like no developer comes to you and asks for a lower variance. There's no guarantee they're going to get it. You have to get your votes. So, you know, that, that's part of frustrating part. A good thing, I think, that's really ethical about Minnesota is we don't allow contingent lobbying in the state of Minnesota. Some states do. That's illegal here, which says, we'll pay you X and if you get us our thing, then we'll give you a bonus or we'll pay you more.
Oh, I see.
That's not legal. So we just try to price what we think is fair to have a big team of people who, you know, are working very hard to not only get you ready, and I, I would say that your administrator has done a lot. So you're ahead of the game there because you put in the bill last time and, and the administrator, somebody in this room, whether it's him or someone else, filled out what we call the MMV form. That was due June 16th to get you in consideration for bonding. We'd be having a different conversation if that not happened. So you're, you're in a good position there. I, I think that a thing for constituents is always to think about what would it cost for you to hire an employee permanently and pay the benefits? And you certainly, you know, you're not going to do that. But we effectively as a team work like a staff, an adjunct staff to the administrator. And, you know, you're not dealing with hiring and firing us, you're just in a contract.
So are you assigned to Minutrista or do we work with everyone in your firm? I mean, does, how do you, if Jasper gives you a list of things we're interested in, who will listen to the legislators?
It's a team of eight of us. We all talk to all of them. We're all there all the time. I'm here because I would be the lead. So we try to send the lead to do the presentation so that you're not hearing from someone else and then saying, no, we're talking to someone we never even met. So it would be me who's the lead.
And then you would assign it to that lobbyist that would be best suited for that particular issue that we might have?
Yeah, so an example might be, we're trying to take a liberal position that you guys all have. So you can all be conservatives, but let's just talk about a liberal position. That issue you raised, that is viewed as a liberal position at the capitol, to oppose what Housing First wants. And, and that, you know, zoning, to preserve your zoning is viewed more liberal at the capitol. The advocates of Housing First position is mostly conservatives, right? So what we'd need to do when the Democrats are in charge, you know, not a big issue there, we'd send in our Democrats to talk to Democrats. But if we had, just like we had a few years ago, Senator Zalba, let's say, he's running the Senate and those Housing First proposals were coming out of the Senate, you know, we'd be lobbying with our, so we have two chiefs of staff to the Senate Republicans who are part of those eight lobbyists. I'd be calling them and saying, Captain, I need you to go talk to Senator Zalba. Could you please explain to him why this is going to hurt Minutrista? You know, and then we'd be working with that legislator. So we're targeting different people to have the right conversation. We have former assistant commissioners under Governor Walz, so we're using those people to talk to Governor Walz. So often the messenger, unfortunately, is received differently. I was bringing the message and we're half, half Republicans and half Democrats and we excel at doing it that way.
How many companies do you represent in Minnesota? How many cities do you represent in Minnesota?
Of the 854, I'd say 20. I could look that up and tell you. We have a, you know, we hit a capacity where we just can't take more people on. So this time of year, we can talk to people. Once we get close to session, we're just at capacity. So I'd say 20, 24 maybe.
And how many, how many in this particular area?
In the whole part of the state. So Jasper is close, so we work with Matt Pabroski, who you know.
Maple Grove.
We have Maple Grove. We passed their local option sales tax.
What about Wayzata?
Yes, we passed their Pan Am money and their tax increment finance district. And on Maple Grove, we did their local option sales tax. We did their 610 and we did their Maple Grove Center. We did the gun range. So, yeah, I mean.
We went at gun range.
Well, I mean, I'm saying so you can hear the different areas we work in. We don't just work in bonding.
Right.
So, yep, Maple Grove.
Yeah. Plymouth? Don't you work for?
Plymouth, we've worked with Dave Calister. We did a tax increment finance district for them. We did bonding for them for their Plymouth Creek Center. And they didn't get their lodging tax, so.
May I ask, do you have a total of, you know, how much do you help cities achieve last year?
You know, we were just asked internally by the partners at our firm, the, the attorneys to provide that and we tried to gather it up. We believe we got more for cities than any lobby in the state and, you know, we comfortably passed $500 million in funding. So, you know, whether it's in the bank or they have to put it on the referendum, you know, depends on, and you all know, you know, your residents might think the Tiff district is zero, but it can be worth 25, 30 million dollars if you can get that passed for the legis, to you, right? So it's not, it's a zero on the spreadsheet for a legislator and I formerly served as the tax chair, so I'm very aware of how, you know, the tax committees view these proposals. But for the purposes of what you might be trying to develop out here, it can be worth millions and millions of dollars in trying to get those through. So I don't have a total of them. I know it's at least a half a billion, or half a billion. So it's a lot of money.
How many different lobby groups are there in Minnesota?
I think there's about, I could be wrong on this. So there's something called the MGRC, which is the Minnesota Government Relations Council, which we're all registered at. So you can look everybody up. I think there's about 1,500 lobbyists in the whole state, something like that.
Individuals.
A lot of people think of federal, so we don't do federal. You know, what you're trying to get any publicity.
But Ann, you're, you're saying individuals.
Individuals, yeah.
So each individual has to be licensed.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah, not, not just the group, it's each individual.
Right. We all have to be registered by law. So every, so you can look up what anyone's doing at any time.
And so.
Minnesota's pretty transparent.
Do you refer to this as a company? Is this?
I'm part of a law firm, so we have eight full-time lobbyists working at our firm.
Lobbyists, how many firms?
Firms, yeah. You know, that I don't know. I mean, I'd say 300.
I think there's like four, what do you think, four or five major ones? I mean, for the, I don't know.
There, there's kind of a delineation on what's our contract lobbyists versus what's called the in-house lobbyists. So an in-house lobbyist, and it gets kind of complicated, like, let's say you work for Mantronic, Mantronic can be a challenge, Mantronic employee and you lobby all day at the capitol. So those are called in-house lobbyists. And there's a ton of those at the capitol, you know? People lobby for General Mills or Mantronic. Like, so the private sector is using their own employees at Best Buy who are actually hired to be government relationses. Then there's what's contract lobbyists and that's what we do. And those are people who are taking on different contracts. And they can be local governments, they can be private companies, you know, people can be hiring us to, you know, stop a tax or start a tax or, you know, whatever it is. But we're contract lobbyists. And then there's what people will call a sole proprietor. So it's just somebody who doesn't work for someone else, they work for themselves, they hang out their own shingle and they may have three, four, or five clients and they're just working for them and they're just, you know, self-employed. So the big ones, you know, are the contract lobbyists and they're, you know, some people would say it's five, some people would say 10, some people would say 15. And then they specialize in different things. So we think we lead in the local government space. I mean, there's definitely firms that, you know, they're really great at health and human services or they're really great at the environment or whatever, you know? So we're, we're doing a number of things, but we have a local government practice. A lot of decisions.
Yeah, it does. I mean, in my head, I mean, I'd actually like to see a map, and I'd like to see what cities you actually represent in this area. And I'd like to see how many other groups represent cities too.
Yeah, I mean, you can literally look me up and you can.
Yeah, flush that out.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can look me or anyone else up, and you can see that. What I would say is, you know, we'll show up as a group that has a good amount of cities, and I think that's going to be clear that. Um, which sounds very un-Minnesotan and bragging, but it's the truth. I think people, um, use us and select us and recommend us because we excel at helping local governments succeed in the space. Um, I think we have an understanding of how local governments work coming from city councils. So we're a little different than some of the other groups. So we'd be high on, on that amount. But, you know, there's 854 cities, so I'd say 20, 24.
I think there was another city just recently added. Yeah, a, a brand new city. Yeah.
Who?
What was it?
Empire.
Empire.
Empire's a city now?
Yeah, yeah, it is. Just, just became a city. Um, any other questions? Because I think I'm good.
Uh, my question about all the bonding, I mean, you mentioned that this last year, there was a huge amount of bonding. And, uh, so what do you think kind of in general, the appetite will be for that in the next session? It looks like some of our neighbors got some help on a lot of issues. But, uh, I, you know, what, what do you see as our possibility?
Yeah, I mean, I looked at your neighbors, I saw Mound, had some stuff, and, um, is it Belize? I don't know how you pronounce that, so they can dig out a little bit. Um, some of, not a bunch of your neighbors didn't have it. Um, because it's always a very small subset of communities who make it into the bonding bill. You know, so, um, it's hard to know. I, I just, like I said, I served there a very long time, and I helped construct these bills. People will say, oh, there's a bonding year, there's not a bonding year. No, that's really true. I mean, every year's a bonding year if they want to pass one, and no year's a bonding year if they don't. Um, it becomes a leverage piece. So I think stepping back because such a large bill passed last year. And one did not pass the two years before, you can make a strong argument, there won't be one next year.
But next year is supposed to be a bonding year.
Right, and that doesn't mean.
But that doesn't mean anything, so we'll see.
It's, it's, it's when you can get the votes is when there's a bonding bill. But what, what I'd say is, you know, so you could say, well, there maybe won't be. On the other hand, if the minority, because they're the ones that are in the driver's seat, if the minority says, you know what, we're going to put the votes to pass one, there'll be one. Because the Democrats are going to want one as a group they like to spend, and so they'll put one together. You'll see one roll out from the House, you'll see one roll out from the Senate, you'll see one from Governor Walz, doesn't mean it's going to happen. It's always the last day of session. And, and if you recall last year, if you're recalling all the Senate Republicans, I think wisely, they said, we're not going to, they took it down. So the House passed it, the House Republicans, they went to the Senate, Senate voted it out. It was at the press conference, and, you know, Senate couldn't, they were leveraging their power to get things, and they got them. They got more money for nursing homes. So that's a typical play. It drives people mad, but the minority usually wants something.
Bottom line is, bottom line is, we don't know.
Right. So, you know, you could say no, because, um, it, there just was a big one. You can say yes, because the Speaker and the Senate Majority Leader, Senate Majority Leader Dietz and Speaker Portman and the governor made a deal to hold back 770, 770 million targeted for bonding for next year. So they'd be ready to go to pass another one. Um, also, it's, you know, it's, it's a bonding year, you know, that doesn't mean anything. I think it's more with the House on the ballot, do, does the minority want to give the majority a win? So, you know, it, it's just impossible, no. What we'd say is, because you can never know, you just have to get on the field. Um, people have bonding bills that sat in the bill in '20, in '21, in '22, and then they passed in '23. And so a typical thing is, if you kind of wait, you just, you just never get there. I mean, it's, it's, it, it really is true that you have to start playing, knowing like it's a long game. You know, we're doing this thing over here, but maybe we're trying to do something else over here.
I have to move this along?
Sure.
Um, are there other specific questions? Because, I mean, we circ, and the other thing is, you know, I've kind of answered your question. Some of this could be fleshed out with RFPs. You could ask in an RFP, we want to know the cities that you, you, um, represent. We want to know how many dollars you've been able to secure for various cities over the last couple of years. You can ask those things in an RFP. Um, what I will say is, I did talk to Senator Morrison and Andrew Myers. Andrew didn't, Representative Myers didn't say that, but Senator Morrison did say, if you want to pursue bonding dollars, especially next year, you, you really need to get a lobbyist. She said that, that will be a, a great help to you. So that, I just heard that from her, but I also heard it from a couple of other people at the conference. And I know Jasper talked to other people as well. So that's, that's just kind of FYI. But we, we don't have to make that decision today. But my very last question and hopefully a short question, I'm sorry to cut you off, we have to be, move on here. But by what time would we have to hire a lobbyist in order to be a, a, a serious player for the next session, starting in January?
I mean, thankfully, your administrator did a lot of the background work. If you had not done that, you would be in trouble for next year. Because he's done it, or his team, um, you could probably even go as late as December 1. I mean, I wouldn't want to go much.
I wouldn't want to do later than that, but, yeah.
I think November 1 would be nicer. I don't think you have to worry whether it's with us or somebody else. And if anyone is telling you to hire us this week, you do not. And that is because the work for bonding is done.
Right.
So I, I don't think you should feel in a hurry.
Right. So we have a, a little while, I wouldn't want to, um, let it go until November, but it, September, October, if we want to discuss this further and decide what we want to do. Again, we don't have to do it tonight, but I just want to kind of keep our eye on the ball and, and make sure we don't pass a certain date where we would then not be able to do this, if, if we wanted to.
A brief question, um, it sounds like you've thought about this. Um, what other things would we use a lobbyist for besides that?
That, that would, that's a great question. It'd be a kind of a legislative agenda that council would help develop. So we, we kind of had a strategic planning session. Uh, we do it annually, I guess, we try to. Um, that would likely piggyback onto a legislative agenda, and we'd identify items that we could potentially pursue. You know, bonding related or policy related. So it'd be up to council. There's things that we have on there, you know, obviously water infrastructure is a high priority right now. Um, in a few years, it might not be as high a priority, or we might not have projects queued up, but we might have some other projects queued up. Um, you know, one of them, one of them is, you know, the city campus. What do we want to do with this large acreage that we have here? Uh, we have a master plan that we've developed. We don't have any dedicated funding. There could be a potential there for a project in the future. I don't know. But we would, we would use whatever lobbyist group we would have, um, to help us develop viable projects that we could pursue. So it's really up to council. We don't have a, we don't have a queue right now, um, that we could say.
We could have four, or five, six different things that we want to queue up. And those, so we could come up with those ideas between now and then. But I think you'd want to have more than just one. You, you don't want to just focus only on the bonding. I mean, if they're going to go talking to the senators and representatives, they might as well talk to them about multiple issues, you know? Let's get a good bang for our buck, so to speak. But, I mean, not that they talk, anyhow, uh, kind of in synopsis form, we'd want to have some, some more things other than just going after money for our water treatment plant.
Okay, thank you.
But I think we could find some other things that we might want to accomplish too, so.
Thank you so much for your time. And whether I, you know, whatever it is to do, just know your senator and your state rep are both really wonderful people who really want to help you. I mean, they are really committed legislators. Not every community has that. Um, some, some communities have legislators who won't even introduce their bills for them because they don't agree with them. So Rep. Myers and Senator Morrison are both really hardworking.
They, they did a great job. We're very appreciative of both of them last, last session. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll bring this back to another council, uh, work session and discuss it more so we can. So now you kind of have a flavor, you can formulate questions and, yeah, yeah. All right.
All right.
Next, budget.
All right. You, Madam Mayor and Counsel, this would be me, I believe, I guess, right? So, uh, yeah, this will probably be a little bit of a review, at least the template and format for, uh, Anne and the mayor. But, um, it's gonna highlight the process, you know, for Peter and Claudia, as well as obviously discuss the, the numbers and try to summarize the, the information that was in, in the packet. So, uh, first few slides here, it's going to be more what we're, um, sort of the timeline and stuff. So, uh, every year we have to certify a preliminary levy by September 30. I think this, this year it's a day early with the, whatever, the weekend or whatever. But basically, by the end of September, we have to certify that preliminary tax levy. And, um, the main point, uh, every year is that whatever we set is the ceiling. It can't go up like between end of September and December. It can come down or stay the same. So just always to be cognizant, and we're, when we're looking at a staff level at the, you know, the budget on the, uh, the front end, we always try to be a little conservative and make sure we're at least covering all the bases and, uh, um, trying to make conservative estimates there, so. So just as far as the timeline, we're, we're meeting tonight to review the initial, uh, presentation and the, and the initial, uh, information that was in the packet. I think we've got it tendly queued up to talk again on August 21st, at least probably some follow-up. I know Kathleen will be here back on the 21st. And then our, um, council meetings, we usually try to then adopt it at one of our regular council meetings. So I think this year is Wednesday, September 6th. Otherwise, the September 18th meetings would be, uh, when we'd be looking to, uh, adopt the, uh, preliminary levy and get that signed and off to the county with our, uh, so then the, uh, county can do the truth and taxation notices that get sent out in November when they, and then they get to see the preliminary school and city and county levies. And that's where, you know, maybe we get some phone calls, maybe we don't, or whatever. So, um, as far as just the main items, we are trying to make sure we are cognizant every year. Obviously, first and foremost is the financial stability, trying to balance that levy amount with what we have in the bank, or, you know, for our fund balance reserves. Our capital equipment plan that was attached in the packet, our, our five-year plan, going to make sure we have, uh, trucks and equipment and squads for Gary, Paul, and technology. Um, needs are met there. Service levels, um, we're looking at adding, uh, the police officer and a public works. So we always, you know, take a look at our service levels, make sure we're, we're doing, um, everything we can to, to keep people happy as far as whether it's, you know, things Public Works does, or the police, or, as well as admin. And then the, uh, the roads has been a big focus the last probably 10, 11 years to make sure we're, and I think this year we, we have good tangible projects to point to that we're getting, getting done this year, so. Here's a summary of all the different components of the levy. And there was a couple of different versions that were in the packet, sort of a version one and two that had, you know, slight, I guess, slight differences. So, um, as you can see, the, the biggest part of the levy every year is that general fund levy. You can see the, the trend there, and obviously with some of the, uh, the union contracts and some of those, um, things coming forward, there's a, a decent increase that, um, is being proposed to that general fund levy for, for operations. You can see the next two items, I'll talk about the debt fund levy and the, uh, road maintenance. So you can see the, the road maintenance really, and that was attached in the packet, too, isn't really going down, it's just sort of shifting to the, the debt line item. Because we're having to levy about $350,000 for the, this year's road project starting next year. So I guess, yeah, I made sure, uh, Gary wasn't in a panic either or anything, or no, that's, uh, we're still spending, you know, a lot of money on roads, it's just shifted. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
No, I noticed, so we levied $875,000 last year. So if you take $350,000 out of that this year, um, or next, next year, um, then that leaves us with, uh, $525,000, and you had $575,000. So it actually increased by 50,000.
Yes, correct.
So that might, might be an area we can do some adjusting on if need be, if we feel that the total is too much or whatever.
Yep.
So keep in mind, we levied for this year, $875,000.
Yep, and in theory, we're basically doing 925 next year.
So next year, um, yeah, right, 50,000 more.
50,000 more. So I know at first glance, people might say it's, you know, it's 300, it's just 350 more in the debt levy column, 300 less in the road maintenance column. But it's still money dedicated for roads.
Okay.
Yep. So, yeah, you can see the total gross levy there, about 6.6 million. We get some fiscal disparities dollars from the county, and then the net levy would be about a little over 6.4 million, what we'd be looking at.
And that's the levy?
Yep, yep.
Okay. And that's a percent, what percentage increase?
That was like about a 12.8%.
12.8, okay.
Yep, yep. And then, uh.
Wait, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Any, any questions? Peter? Okay, all right. Just speak up if you have questions, okay?
I am curious about, what is the total cost of the, um, increase in salaries?
So I asked Ally this afternoon, but not total salaries. I said, with the additional police officer, and this will come up, I think, in a little bit, and the union contracts for the police, just the police side, 261,000. Additional, additional, you know?
Estimated.
Yeah, yeah, okay, ish. Yeah, we don't know how much overtime or whatever. This is based on, on hourly wages and so on. Again, based on the contracts that are in our, our packet.
And then on the maintenance side of things, how much does that?
Oh, for Public Works?
Yeah.
Ally, what was that? Do you remember offhand? I want to say that was maybe like 70, 80, because some of their time split to like the enterprise, the water utility, you know, and sewer. I want to say that was like 80,000 or so, 80, somewhere between 75 and 100. So, you know, not quite to the level, because police is all out of the general fund and basically out of the tax levy type funds where Gary's staff can be, you know.
Sewer, water, stormwater.
Yep, so that's where it's a little different. Not quite as, a larger increase or whatever for their time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. But, yeah, you can see the, I mean, a lot of that, why that general fund levy is having to go up so much, it's driven by, you know, salaries. And that's obviously going to be our biggest expense every year is, it's our people, you know, or whatever, so.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, it's about 87,000 for the.
Public Works, that's what I thought, yeah.
So then, yeah, and, um, I don't know if someone was starting to ask yet.
So if you figure, I'm sorry, Brian, so just, Claudia and, um, Peter, so if you think about, around 60,000 is 1% increase. So this is 261 plus 80, you know, so we're talking 340, 345. So you figure, we're talking just in salaries, just for those two groups, um, a significant increase.
And, yeah, and that's not basically the, the non-union staff, which that's, so that would be above and beyond.
Four, five, about a 6% increase just for that.
Yep.
And that's, yeah.
Without the administrative planning, you know, those type of roles. So that's above and beyond that, yep, so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Then, yeah, I don't know if anyone was asking, um, this version's about a, what, a 12.8% increase, or, or I think, or something to that effect, it's close to, you know, just under 13%.
Where did you make those adjustments then to make it that, that 12-point, whatever?
Oh, as far as, um, where, what portion each of that makes up or whatever.
Well, no, so this is 12.6, the other one was 14.8. What, why, or where did the?
Oh, the difference, yeah.
Where's the difference coming?
Yep, I'll go, I got a slide, yeah, going right into that. You read my mind, yeah. So, so basically, it was just another, um, 100,000 to the, um, general fund there. Um, so this is 4.87. In this, in the first version, it was, it was 4.77. So basically, another 100,000 to the general fund levy. And what this did was, it got us closer to that 40%, the general fund balance percentage. It got us from like 38 to 39, or 38, something, 39.
You're talking the general fund balance?
Yeah, the, the fund balance.
Yeah.
Percentage policy or whatever, so.
To replenish it?
Yeah, yeah, basically to get a little more money into the general fund, yep.
So at 14.8%, we're at 39, 38, 39%?
Yeah, it's like 39 and a half percent, yeah, yeah, so just shy of 40.
Okay.
And that, this version also did have, it shifted a little more money to the, the one-time police funds, to Capitol versus operations. So there was that component too, or whatever, so.
So, and I do want to talk about that a little bit.
Okay.
So we had 372,000 that we got from the state for public safety. Um, so I had a thought. I don't know if it's a good thought or not, I had a thought. So I was thinking using some of it to offset some of these increased costs for our police department. So we know we have 261,000. I'm not saying using that full amount to offset it, but using some of it to offset that amount. I would like to set a certain amount aside in earmarket for the gun range. Because we're never going to probably have another opportunity to get this kind of money for public safety. So you can use it all for, for salaries, but I think it would also be good or nice if we could also use some of it. So here's, here's my, my thought. We'd have to maybe arm wrestle the crime fund for, back in the day, Bill Gillespie, um, gave the crime, the Minatrista Crime Fund $100,000. Okay, it's supposedly, or should still possibly, we have to check, be sitting in there. I would like to, um, use that money, tell them they have to give it back to us. I would like to use that money along with some of this money that we've gotten to help fund the gun range. In addition to that, I'd like to look at some other opportunities for fundraising. And I won't go into details right now about that, but, um, outside of tax dollars. So that's why I would like to have some discussion in terms of how much you would be comfortable, number one, if you're on board with that idea. Number two, how much should we take of this 372,000 in earmarket for a gun range? So those are two questions.
Okay, so, okay, so, first off.
Yeah.
Did you have this discussion with Chief Falls yet?
Not yet. I did, I did sort of. I, I have said.
He might want his money for something else.
I did, I did vaguely mention it because I didn't want to get their hopes up. So Chief, would you like a gun range?
Madam Mayor and Counsel, absolutely. The question would be, uh, you know, are there priorities prior to that? But, I mean, we know that we've been struggling with this, the whole concept of trying to finish this gun range. And we have this space that's built specifically for that purpose, it's not useful for anything else, just by the way, the nature of the construction. So it seems a, a kind of a waste to just let it sit there, uh, in its current form.
Right. I mean, could we use it for other things? You can continue to use it to offset the cost of.
Okay, just, just full.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, in a previous meeting, I thought we heard something about building out more offices over there, and that's what that money was going to be used for, and, I, 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 you said, you said other priorities. I'm not against the gun range, anyway, but, but the point is that I thought that money was already spoken for, for things for your police department.
There's two, two monies, okay?
Okay.
So we received a, a very, very generous gift just recently for the 200,000.
That was exercise.
That's for the Wellness Center.
Yes.
And with that, we've talked with, and I'll let Jasper and, and Chief talk. Um, it sounds like they will be able to also, uh, not finish off, but what are they going to do with those, with that office space? There's, there's available space over there for offices, uh, besides the gun range. Okay, you can't use the gun range for office space. So the other office space available is going to be, is it finished off or roughed in? What's going to hap, with this Wellness Center?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Counsel, so just to bring you up to speed real quickly on that, I did meet with their construction foreman. And he came out and looked at the site along with their architect. They're in the process of drawing up the plans. In that process, they saw our original blueprints, which included in that unfinished space where the Wellness Center is going to go, there's a piece that was originally designated for offices right off the main hallway. So in our discussions while they were on site, uh, they said that they would be willing to finish those off. I don't know that they're going to put office equipment in them, but as long as they're there and putting up walls and what have you, that will be part of the plans. So I, we haven't heard back, so I can't give you more specifics than that. At this point, it looks like we will possibly get our offices as part of the Wellness Center, Fitness Center area.
Okay.
Which is a new development since we talked last. And that's, unfortunately, I don't have any more details until I hear back from that group.
So that's that 200,000, and then this 372,000? So that's that two hundred thousand, and then this three hundred and seventy-two thousand?
That came from the state.
Yes.
And that, that's based on our population and everything, and so we have this three hundred and seventy-two thousand, and it's called public safety money. We can use it for anything. It, it's very, very, very loosely worded as to what we can use it for. But anything public, um, safety related is, 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 we can use it for that.
Okay, okay. And, and did you, Chief Falls, have specific ideas about what you wanted to use that money for?
Mayor and Council, we briefly have had some discussions about, I think at one of the last meetings, we talked a, a bit about trying to earmark a piece of that for, uh, recruitment and retention, which is what a lot of departments are doing. Certainly not all of that money, but a piece of it. Uh, and that ultimately would be up to you, whether you agree or want to do that, and then to what extent. Uh, but that certainly, I think, would be important. I, I can tell you that today I was on the postboard website, and there are a hundred and ninety-five job postings for licensed police officer in the state of Minnesota, which is the highest I've ever seen it. In, in over thirty years. So that's, that's alarming, uh, to a lot of cities. And so that's why a lot of cities, you're starting to see, um, some money dedicated to this cause, just for that exact reason. So that would be certainly, uh, probably at the top of the list. I think there are also probably some capital improvement items, um, that, uh, we haven't had the money to fund. We have, we are in the process of, as you know, adding staff. Uh, we haven't added a, a vehicle in years. So at some point, we probably would need to add one vehicle, which isn't really too costly, but that would certainly be a valid use of that money, things like that. So, um, beyond that, we really haven't, uh, taken a, a real close look at this yet. We haven't had a lot of discussion about it today.
So the venue for this discussion, because I'm not against it any.
No, no, I know.
But I also don't want you to come back and ask us for another two hundred thousand or something. So, so I, I would like to see some sort of a plan. So who's going to discuss what with, what with whom?
Probably staff could, um, do that. And, I mean, so the Chief and, um, and Jasper and, and Brian could, kind of come up with some sort of a, a plan, a schedule, um, and come back with some, some ideas. That, I think Brian was, they've already kind of done that.
Yeah, yeah, I guess to just add context. So this version here has basically about two hundred thousand going to operations out of that three seventy-two and the other. And the other one seventy-two going to capital. So it's almost half and half. And I think even from talking with Chief Falls before and, and listening to him now, again, I think a half and half approach would be good, whether it's one eighty and one eighty. Because if we put it all to capital, this version blows up, and we're like at an eighteen percent levy increase. I don't know who wants to all go there.
No.
I guess, I'm seeing one at least.
No, that's, we're not, we're not saying.
No, no, but that's, I think a half and half is a good measured approach, or give or take.
But I think what Ann wants is, okay, what is the other half going to, how, what, what are, what are the needs? What are the priorities of those needs? And then what are the, what is that going to cost us? The other thing I want to be careful of is, um, even if we spend, take two hundred of that for twenty twenty-four, that's only a one-time thing. In other words, that's just covering our costs, our additional, or part of our additional costs for twenty twenty-four. That doesn't cover, continue to cover the cost for.
But it gives us a good start, because the first, the other contracts is so much more higher than the subsequent years.
Right, no, I, I realize that. It's just that the following year, in twenty twenty-five, we're going to have to add yet another, probably four or five percent to that. To, to cover additional costs. I mean, we have to keep looking at that, too.
Yes.
So.
I'm sorry, I would just like to see like a list coming from you, Chief, what you would, what you think is the most important thing, and what would attract first, you know, top quality, uh, employees for the city, you know, officers. You said there's a hundred and something, um, applications out there, or, you know.
Jobs.
Job requests. So how could we look very attractive?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, I, I, I agree. I think, uh, the city has taken the first step with the, what's later tonight on the agenda with the new, uh, contracts. I think that's, uh, that's a huge step. Um, so, uh, I think we're on our way there. And then we're just kind of looking beyond that, uh, for recruitment and retention. And we're kind of learning as we go. This, this stuff has never changed at the rate it's been changing. I mean, six months ago, it was very different tactics than, than departments are using today. So, uh, it's changing much quicker. But I'd be happy to work with staff and try and come up with some priorities. And, uh, we can bring it back once we have more detail for you.
Okay, so unless I'm wrong, yeah, all right.
Oh, go ahead.
Unless I'm wrong, you kind of just blew up the meeting as far as what you had proposed. I, I ripped this thing apart this weekend. I got it down to what we talked about, a hundred thousand dollars. But, but by putting this in, you just blow it up, because I don't have any details now. I have no idea what that's going to cost. I'm not even sure we have it estimated as to what it's going to cost. We have no, and I'm not yelling.
That's okay.
And I'm not angry about it. I'm just saying that I'm not sure we're going to get to a final tonight, because it kind of blows it up.
Well, I, no, I think we're sort of looking at it backwards, because this money is one-time dollars coming in to supplement all the things we're pretty much already doing. I mean, the union contracts have, to me, I think Paul said it best, the, the most important step we did is we're adopting. We're going to be at a, a good spot in the market for police officers, so if we're paying good wages, we're going to keep people. So I don't think there's a ton additional we need to do. I don't think he's suggesting, I said, I want to talk at a turn that we got to pay fifteen thousand dollar bonuses or, or something like that.
There's different things out there, but then, which, whatever you do, and Paul and I have talked about this, there's also drawbacks to those, um, things. So you have to be careful, you know, bonuses or, or, or things like that, you have to be careful with that. Because you also have existing people, and then you also have non-union people. And so we have to be very careful what we do. And, and there has to be a lot of thought put behind that. And I've already, already talked with the Chief about some of, some of the things other cities are doing that might work for those cities, but don't necessarily work for our city. But I think Paul hit the nail on the head, is I think with these union contracts that Jasper and Allie have been working very, very diligently on, and very hard on, and have done a fantastic job, by the way, um, has brought us really, really very, very competitive. Not only, um, will these, uh, salaries be a thing, but I also think the Wellness Center, and Paul has said this numerous times, the officers are so excited about this. Once that's done, we get that done, that's also going to be kind of a feather in our cap. And the other thing is, um, just the, um, the, the leadership that we currently have in our police department is excellent. And it's known out there. And here's another factor, we as a council fully support our police department. People know that. People know that out there. And if you don't think other people know what's going on in our city, you're wrong. They absolutely know what's going on in our city, and the police know what's going on in our city. And they know how we support our police department. And that's huge, getting people to come to our city, even though it's small. So keep those in mind. We want to send a message, we support our police department, we're paying them good wages, we have a Wellness Center, we have great facilities. All of that adds in. But I think to your point, Ed, to your point, it doesn't hurt to have a plan and know exactly what other things might be coming down the pike.
Okay. Jasper, you're going to have to jump in on this one. Jasper and I had an hour-long conversation. We, we went through this whole thing. It got down to a hundred thousand dollars. And the hundred thousand dollars could actually come out at the end, because you might have the hundred thousand surplus. And we don't know how bills are actually going to go between now and the end of the year. Am I on the right track?
Mm-hmm.
And I can't possibly say tonight, with the added things, that this is okay, although, although. Um, I do understand, we told, we sent you away last time, and we said ten to twelve percent. And you brought us twelve to fourteen, and I assume you did that, because you kind of know we could have some money at the end of the year, and you know that in December, we could lower the number. Go ahead, edit that.
Yep. Yeah, because that's where we just talked about a few slides, but you want to set it a little on the higher side, the fourteen, fifteen.
Yeah.
Come down to twelve, thirteen, versus all of a sudden, you set at twelve, thirteen, and really, oh gosh, we had something happen where we're two hundred thousand short or something, and now we can't raise it, or whatever.
Okay, so I, so I can go down that path. I can go down that path. And again, the hundred thousand, which is basically what it comes down to.
Tell me what the hundred, what are you talking about, the hundred thousand?
Uh, between version one and version two, as far as.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
I, I'm sorry, okay, yeah. And a hundred thousand in the budget of a city, this city is not a big deal.
Right, it isn't.
And it's not going to impact people's taxes.
I've got a couple of slides on that in a minute here. Should I, should I just skip to that almost? I could, yeah, I wonder, maybe I'll just skip to that, because, yeah, the next.
Also, then to Ann's point too, okay, if you pass, and again, we're not going to do this tonight. It'll come back on the, for more discussion at our second meeting in August. And it could even come back for another meeting in September, because we could pass it on September eighteenth, okay? Um, so just keep that in mind. We don't have to make final decisions tonight, but I think we need to give staff some more direction. Here's the thing, with, if you were to pass the fourteen point eight and wanted to bring it down at the end, we, I, like I was saying with the road, we, road budget, there's another fifty thousand in there that we could take out and still maintain the same level as we have this year for a road levy, okay? So there's another point, another percent, if you wanted to bring that down.
Good.
I mean, there's.
Yeah, fourteen, fifteen.
Thirteen, yeah. So I mean, there's some, there's, I think with Brian, what Brian is trying to do too is add a little cushion in here and there so that if we wanted to bring it down, or we had to add, we have that, that flexibility.
Yep. Some of these, obviously, whereas union negotiations went on, and some other things became more apparent from when we talked in June, that we had a little more finite numbers, and department managers were able to look at their budgets and see if fuel's going up here, utilities or whatever. So, so, yeah, here, I'll just, yeah, so this is the first version, this is the hundred thousand lower one, or whatever, and the twelve point eight percent, basically. You can see, basically, the assumption made, and we've talked to Henneman, Kevin Lynn at Henneman County, our assessor, and the average valuation adjustment is going to be about ten percent, about nine, ten, eleven percent. So basically, take four fifty, that becomes four ninety-five, then the next year, six fifty, seventeen, fifteen, or six fifty to seven fifteen, and so on. So you can see the annual difference here, based on using a twelve point eight percent increase. For this around half million dollar home would be about a hundred dollars to their taxes. About seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would be about one seventy-seven, and then the eight fifty to nine thirty-five would be about two thirty-three, so.
So you, you came in at almost exactly my number.
Yeah, but it's still, yeah, still under twenty bucks a month, right here at the two thirty-three.
That's almost the exact number. And again, what, what I talked to Jasper about, and granted, the city is an entity unto itself, but still, we're going to be facing the high school increase, which could be another five hundred dollars.
Depends on your valuation.
Yes, it does.
It does.
So with that in mind.
But most, but the average home in Minatrista isn't going to see a five hundred thousand dollar increase.
Okay, fine.
But it's, I mean, yes, but we have to look, I, 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 and I actually talked to Jasper about this too. But we have to look at what the city needs. We have to look at what our needs are and how we can meet those needs, and what our priorities are. And then those, that, we have to make our decision based on that. The school has to make their decisions, or the residents in our community have to make their decision. That, that's going to go to a vote.
I hear all that, I hear all that. But again, we represent the interests of the resident. And we have to protect the resident against having taxes that are too high. So we have to take that into consideration as well. But I'm not against this. I'm not against this.
Yeah, can I, should I roll forward?
Yes, please do.
So this is the fourteen point six percent, um, scenario, and you can see it just slightly, these numbers, you know, a hundred and fifteen, two hundred, two sixty-four, based on the, the levy, that's a little closer to fifteen percent. So still not bad. I mean, two sixty-four is twenty-two bucks a month, I guess, or something around that, so, um, I mean, manageable. I guess, what I want to sort of roll into, I guess, to, to Ann's point, I guess, you know, where, so, I think this is what you're sort of talking about. So we're in the green portion. This is a West Toca School District property. If you have a property value about, that's right about the median value, about six hundred, and for two twenty-two, two thousand, twenty-three, you know, about six hundred and fifty thousand. Your total tax bill's fifty-seven, sixty-two, we're only thirteen, twenty of that. And that's all we can control. So we can't control if the schools, you know, at fifteen hundred here, and the county's at twenty-three hundred. So I would almost probably make the reverse argument. We've been probably a better value. And maybe I don't want to pit the school against the city or anything, but as far as what you're paying for, I mean, you're, we're the third out of the main three entities as far as what we're collecting in tax dollars. And it gets even.
I, I hear what you're saying.
More of a distribution when you look at, you know.
That's what Colonia.
Well, Colonia, they've had their big, you know, large building projects, there's seventy-five million or whatever, and, you know, this same valued property, they're about at three thousand dollars, you know, obviously similar values sold that same property, just paying the thirteen, twenty to, uh, to the city, that comes to the city through the county. But, so, yeah, I guess as far as how much of a burden we are on taxpayers for the city of Minatrista, we're basically between eighteen to twenty-three percent of your total tax bill. So I guess you could, I would argue that's pretty good.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, yeah, but the problem is, we can't, we really can't base our decision on what might happen with the school, because we don't know. That has to go up for a, a vote.
We can from year to year, because the high school thing is a one-shot deal.
Right.
This year, for next year. But.
But if, but if we make the decision now, so we have to decide today what our taxes are going to be, um, what our levy is going to be. And we won't know the outcome of the school referendum until.
After the election.
Next, well, is, is it this fall? I think next fall, next fall.
It's this fall.
It's this fall.
This is fall.
It's off-year, yeah.
It's off-year.
So it's this fall.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure we don't go over.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't think, again, what you can do is you can reduce certain things. There are certain things we're going to be locked into, of course, union, contracts, wages, if we don't want to lose, have a mass exodus. So there's, there's certain things we're going to be locked in. The things that we're not locked into is our road, our road levy. And that's a, a nice big chunk. Um, that can be reduced if need be. I'm not recommending that, but. But then, again, as Brian pointed out, two hundred and sixty-four dollars a year, even if you doubled that, let's just say the, the school thing went through and it, and it, you have to now pay two hundred and sixty-four dollars or two hundred and seventy-five dollars to the school. And you're talking five hundred and some odd dollars. Even if it's six hundred dollars, it's fifty dollars a month.
I'm done. All right, well, I, I applaud the work that's been done.
But I think, I think what we need to do is just, I, I mean, tonight, probably, the, the thing we probably want to do is stick with the higher one. And then, again, come back with some, some of these, this information that you had wanted regarding the police and stuff. And then we can decide. But I think if there's anything else, we have all these notes, you need to share them with us, or share them with, um, staff, so we can give them direction as well.
That's fine. Jasper and I had a very long talk.
You need to tell us.
No, actually, Jasper, Jasper can sum it up. It's basically what we're talking about. I don't think that the hundred thousand, one way or another, whether it's twelve or the fourteen, is a big deal.
Okay.
I don't.
Okay, yeah.
So, so I can go there. And I know that we are trying to make up, we're trying to get to a balanced budget in the year. I just want to make sure that with, that we aren't putting too heavy a burden, because it's easy to discuss tax burdens in a minute point.
Sure.
But then add all the inflation of the gas and everything else that everybody else has to pay, it gets out of hand. And there'd be a lot of residents that, that feel it.
But we, that's part of what's driving our budget even, too, is we have the, the increase due to.
If I could, as, and I know we're running a little late, a little long on time, but regarding the public safety money, I think what would be, because, so we don't get bogged down in what we're going to actually spend it on. I think from a policy setting standpoint, it would be great to get feedback on what proportion you want in capital versus operations. That can then, you know, then we can go to Paul and, and Brian and that, that group and say, all right, we're going to do two hundred in a capital, two hundred thousand in capital and a hundred and seventy-two in operations, or, you know, some number. And then we can come up and say, well, we're, we're going to spend this two hundred thousand on these items. That would be helpful. Because I, because right now, I think, I think version two, correct me if I'm wrong, is two hundred thousand in capital, one seventy-two in operations?
Well, it's slightly flipped. It's two hundred thousand in operations.
Okay.
Yeah, and one seventy-two in capital, but I mean, that's only a thirty thousand dollar difference.
Yeah, yeah, so think about that, because we can, we have things to spend the money on, yeah, no doubt. Like Paul will be able to spend that money on squads or any other sort of equipment. So we, we can figure that piece out. I think just policy-wise, it'd be great to get the proportion, then we can really dial in the percentage.
Yeah, it mainly just tells us where, like, the two hundred. It mainly just tells us where, like the 200,000 there, I know it's sort of small to see, but that's what's one-time police funds, going into the general fund in this version. So we just need to know, is staff, is that going to be 175 or 200 or 225 or, or something different? Because right now, I mean, we've got 200 plugged into the general fund and 172 in capital. So if you just, if it just moves a little bit, it's not that big a deal. It'd more be like if there was some big initiative to, to do or something additional.
Well, this is, I guess, management philosophy. I believe that the person who's managing whatever needs to actually be very included in that whole thing. That's why I asked the question. So basically, I believe that Chief Falls has to prioritize what it is he wants before we can actually just hand you a dollar number. I, I can't just hand you a dollar number tonight when I don't even know what the man wants.
Yeah, well, I, point well taken. But I will tell you, he'll, he can spend the 372,000 on capital right now.
So I think.
That blows this up again.
It does.
So here's the thing, I think Paul could say, I want this, this and this and this, and that's fine. But I think what they're getting at is the amount that we put into capital and then we can decide what that's spent on and the amount that's put into operations for 2024, that's going to determine that bottom percentage.
That frontality.
So where do you feel, so if you feel comfortable right now with a 14 whatever point eight, that says that there's 100, there's 200,000 for operations for 2024. Do you want to flip that and say 200 for capital and then they can get to work on how that 200 is going to be spent? Or do you want to keep it like it is?
I think, excuse me, Madam Mayor, I think they need to tell us.
Thank you.
The way, I mean, just.
They do.
That's just, you just, how would you like it flipped? I mean, how would you like it?
Yeah, I personally, I think I pulled Jasper, I'd like almost half and half, so whether it's even 180, 180 or whatever, you know, 180, 190 or, I think we're real close. I just, you know, needed to plug in some sort of version to show the council. But I think there's about 50%, I mean, there's big operational needs, like the contracts, the union contracts and stuff, and there's big capital needs. So I would, I would put half to each as long as Chief Falls is okay with that, I guess, or.
But, but the whole thing is, and that's why I'm saying there has to be more conversation. Unless. All three of you? Know exactly what Chief Falls, what he wants, what it's going to cost for what he wants. Unless you know that right this second, I don't know how you can make that decision.
But I think it's going to cost more than that.
Right, exactly. So I think it's going to cost more than what you think it's going to cost. And, and I know that you're, you seem to be trying to draw a line in the sand, which, which you're doing in order to save the 12 and the 14%. I get that. But I kind of like to know ahead of time, before we make that line in the sand, what it is.
Well, then, okay, that's fine. But then, then that's okay. Then they can go back and they can come up with.
And we do have that. We, we have a capital equipment, you know, replacement plan.
Yes.
So we, we have that and we would likely just take whatever money you allocate towards capital and use that to buy those things. So squads, most probably squads, I'm guessing. So we do have a robust capital improvement plan that we can then just plug this money into. It essentially would buy down future.
Future.
Infusions into that fund. So it, it would have potentially a tax impact not realized in 2024.
See, what I'm, what I, again, and, and we can have another, we will have another discussion on this. What I'm looking at is, I don't want to do something that's ongoing. In other words, one time, I can understand taking some of this money to help offset the operational increase that we've had. But I do want a set of dollars for something that's going to be permanent. In other words, it's a one-time investment. So squad cars, we already got that figured out. We know we're going to need squad cars in the future, they're going to continue to be needed, we're going to keep adding that. Whatever, but again, maybe there's something else that I think we should then use some of this money for a one-time purchase that we couldn't normally do.
Right.
It's kind of a, a windfall for us. And I, I'd like to use it for, this is just me, but if you guys all disagree, that's fine, but I'd like to use it for a one-time thing that we don't have the money for right now and that we won't have the money for. That's, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
And, and I, I hear you loud and clear. I don't necessarily disagree, but I, again, I go back to the manager of the department and the manager of the department knows best what the department needs. And if his priorities are exactly what you're saying, then test and we're done.
Yeah.
But I don't know that right this second.
And that's fine. So I think that's what will, Paul?
Madam Mayor and Council, I think you're, you're raising very good points and I think the way that Brian has this laid out, whether it's 50/50 or, or something very close to that, I think that would accommodate some of the things that we've talked about earlier. I don't have exact dollar amounts for you because we haven't gotten that far in the weeds in our discussion yet. And, you know, I'm, I'm very thankful that you're so supportive and, and want to meet our needs. I think you've, you've already done a very good job of that even prior to this money. So that puts us in a good place already, which is great. And this is just an extra thing that I think we can maybe meet some of these needs that have gotten more expensive or that we want to make a little bit more robust than we currently have. But I think the way that Brian has it laid out, and we'll certainly go through and verify that, so you're, you're confident in that and I'm confident in that. But the way he has it laid out now, I think we can address those needs.
Okay, good.